All right. Good afternoon, good evening. Welcome everyone to the Facilities Committee of the Ithaca City School District Board of Education. And we're going to start tonight's meeting by asking if we have anyone here for public comment. And I believe the answer is no, no public comment this evening. And we will move on to the approval of minutes from the March 21st meeting. Have you had time to review those Karen?
Yes.
Excellent. Are you ready to approve them or? I am as well, so we can assume that those minutes are approved. And we can move right along to the next items. Which is the first is a progress report from Travis Randall tonight on our capital projects.
Sure. Hello, I'm gonna give a real brief. Synopsis, we can act, we have a page to two pages we can actually attach to these minutes to. We have a few phases, we're wrapping up, which is Phase One, the high school roof. Re-roofing project and middle school temperature controls upgrades. Which are in process of closeout with our contractors right now. Our active phase of construction is Phase Two. Which is work at Enfield, kind of, kind of tabled for now for the season, we have geothermal going in there. LACS entry addition is nearing completion. Dewitt Auditorium also nearing completion. We have additional work. This summer for Dewitt carrying on. South Hill. Is scheduled for completion the end of next summer, so we still have some ongoing work there. And high school toilet rooms, we just. Turned over. Several sets of bathrooms in area G and we're taking over area H. Toilet rooms for renovation. Right now. Enfield Roof. Which is a future Phase 3A1 is going to. Contract was awarded, we're going to. Begin that summer 2024. And we also have an upcoming Phase 3A2, which was BJM and Enfield renovations. That work is actually going to be rolled into. Phase 3B1. Just aligns with the construction better. And that's what I have for our update.
All right, Chris or anyone else want to add anything? To that? That's okay. Yeah, it is a good summary and for people who want to look at. Some more of the particulars, we're going to add the minutes. Or add these to the minutes, the notes that we had.
Yeah, and I can take any question.
I had a question, this is going to be kind of a pet peeve, so you'll have to. You know, bear with me here. And that's that on there, I noticed that one thing that's going to happen with the South Hill parking lot. Is an additional repaving of the lower lot. So that it matches. The new lot. And my peevish question is, is that absolutely necessary? That sounds like a lot of money. Or aesthetic issues.
I think what you're seeing, the last season, we kind of ran out of time. We have a base coat, there's multiple levels of concrete, so we're not repaving, it was already included in the cost, it's actually two layers. It just has the first layer, the binder course of blacktop down now. So the top course will be, will be installed this summer.
And that was going to be done regardless of what happened with the other one because. It isn't just a matter of matching the color or something to the other. It's something that needs to be done as part of the completion of that asphalt work.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we haven't added any scope to that, that's the original scope that was always. Yeah, right now is the binder course, that won't hold up for long term, it's actually good to let it set for the season. And then come back and put your, your top coat on. It's a finer granular blacktop and, and so, yeah, but no, no scope was added.
Okay, and what's the anticipated life of something like that when it is completed?
Oh, I think it's, I'm not an expert on that, so it's, it's gonna vary depending on traffic and all that, but it's, there's different grades, so. This is a commercial grade that we use, so it's for obviously heavy bus traffic and all.
So we would hope not to see paving machines in there right away after this is done?
I would, I would suspect, I would hope not, yeah, I'm sure, I don't know, I couldn't give you.
Okay.
Timeline, but I, it's, it's too long, yeah.
Okay. Karen, anything?
It's not city grade, that's. Yeah, hopefully it will.
Heavy, heavy trucks and.
Although it is a thick base, we do try to. Design it for knowing that school buses are, you know, gonna be coming in and out, so it's a heavy duty. What we call a section, so the thicknesses of the asphalt.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Add also that we have our OACM meeting, Owner Architect Construction Manager meeting next week, and so. We delve into a little bit more detail with regard to the things that Travis summarized for us tonight.
Okay, and that's going to be at your offices next week, right? Because we'll be, the school district is on break, okay? Thank you. Next up on the agenda, facilities update from Heather Williams. Either join us at the table, that might be best, or grab the mic from Chris.
I do like to wander.
In that case.
Thanks for having me, even without the visual. I can share a little bit. For the visual, so if you want to, yes, just scooch up right to, to April. And again, just, just orienting around that facilities as a partner in the educational process. And. To highlight that today, not those pictures, not yet. Hopefully we got April's up, but if, if not, we have a really awesome, amazing picture of a pile of scrap metal. And. What makes me feel happy about it is that it reflects a partnership between food service and facilities. And as you know, food service takes care of all the babies too, all over the district. And they were, their storage space wasn't as usable as they'd like, and it wasn't as user friendly. And we sort of brainstormed and helped them order, and then we, we redid the high school stockroom for them. And then we carefully dismantled the stuff that wasn't really working well, we determined that it's really past its usable life. And that will come back to the district as income in that, in the terms of that, that scrap, so that's, that's one of the pictures. There is another, so you just use your imagination, just close your eyes. There's a picture of two new quad cab trucks and a new minivan. And if you can imagine those quad cabs holding four of our groundskeepers and taking with them. Mowers, edgers, leaf blowers. Everything they need to truly landscape each of our buildings. Then that is, that is kind of the culmination of about eight or nine months worth of collaboration with transportation. And Liz and Dan and Amanda and everyone really working together to help us change the way we're taking care of the aesthetic outside of our building. And so that's another picture, there is another, the lower center picture. It's okay, it's all right, because I'm really good at describing. The lower center picture is the baseball dugouts, and I took a picture of it. Because it is free from bird dung. And I say that only because A, gross. And B, because it is a constant battle to keep all of our spaces healthy for kids. For whatever reason, in the spring, the dugouts are a place where our athletes like to gather and study birds.
Is it the geese?
No, no, it is, we got some pigeons in there, we got some robins in. So they like to make their home and then dugout and. And to deal that, we have a crew go over with buckets every morning and scrubbers. To remove evidence that the birds were there, so that our, our goal is that we make enough noise. On those fields throughout the day, that by the time our athletes come to those in the afternoon. They remain as clean as they were in the morning. It is, it is an ongoing effort. There's another, the lower right picture that you can't see is a screenshot of communication I got from. From a teacher. He had expressed that the UN event that exchanges air in his classroom, oh, there you go. It was making like a loud banging and clicking, oh, thank you. And as, as you're aware. That's not supposed to be that way. And also it's really hard to teach around and learn around. And it took about three tries to, to get that going and. I have found that one of the most frustrating things about working in education. Is throwing something out to the void and not getting any feedback at all. So when this person had submitted a work order or had one submitted on their behalf. Then I reached out and just said, wow, that, that must be really difficult, we're sending someone over right now, by the end of the week, we should have it. And so the screenshot, I, there's just an email, it said. Just wanted to say thanks for the work your staff did yesterday, it's working great and super quiet, thanks again and have a terrific day. And for me, that was like the biggest cause for my five ever. Because my staff and the members of the folks that work directly with students are starting to understand the. The mutual relationship that we have to have in order to do good things for kids, so that screenshot indicates the progress we're making. There's a tiny little short movie above it, and it's just a reality check for us. When I was in an admin meeting Monday, Eileen Granger came in and said, this is happening in my office, and she played a video, and it was like a loud banging. And she said, I think it's, like, she was joking. Said, it sounds like a ghost and the pipes just banging, and I thought, uh-oh, that's a water hammer. And I stepped outside and usually if you, if you get something in your pipes that doesn't belong, air, for instance. You get a really, it sounds like someone's shaking and banging the pipes. It also means there's a leak somewhere. So I was able to step out into the hallway, have a quick conversation with Dan, and then we sent a crew up there, so that video is when they stuck their hand up through. They, they found. That video is just water running everywhere, and it's about 210 degrees, so it's water and it's steam. It's, it's everything everywhere, and it was handled, valved off, and taken care of within two hours, and by the time. Our meeting was over and I was on to the next one, the situation was taken care of and with no. It was an evening thing and there was no interruption for learning the next day.
Where, where was this Heather? I don't know, Eileen, so.
Oh, I apologize, this was in Enfield.
Okay.
This is in Enfield. But don't worry, in case you're looking for one closer to home, we had a pipe disintegrate right here in, in G Wing yesterday. And we were able to, again, repair ourselves without, you know, calling it any other agency. And without interrupting teaching and learning, that we could maintain the building's temperature and we could replace what we need to replace, so. In terms of facilities, that, the honest truth is that they're aging, but we are building in our capacity to quickly respond and even anticipate problems so that they're not. There's, they're not impacted teaching and learning, or it's minimized. That's all I have for story time, this particular time. I'm, I'm open to questions now, if you have any, and I believe I'll be speaking to you again regarding sustainability in a little bit.
Questions or comments Karen?
No, thank you.
It sounds, it sounds really good, two quick comments. One is roughly how long? Was it from the time when you received that concern from the teacher about the noisy vent or whatever till? Your folks were in there and fixing it, do you have a, was it a matter of days or?
So the, the first fix wasn't successful, and neither was the second fix. So sometimes it's a matter of troubleshooting where they replace this part, this part, that they're, the units are a little bit old. And so lots of things could be wrong with them, so it was a three day span.
Nice, from the time it went on to the.
The time we knew about it, to the time that we were able to troubleshoot and work our way through it and solve a problem, so.
Very nice.
Thank you, I was really proud of.
Yeah, I should think so. A quick comment, and that's that maybe one of those big owl, fake owls mounted on the dugout. Or something like that, a robotic cat, I don't know, I, this is, this kind of thing is exciting.
Our team is brainstorming, like we've been calling agway, we're like, how do we keep the birds away in a humane and kind way?
A raptor, we'll do it.
Really?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Get a fake raptor or some other predator and put it up there.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you for that, that's, that's something that's really easy to.
Take data on it, maybe we'll get a masters out of it, who knows? All right.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. What's up next, sustainability Amanda? Okay. Upcoming phases for capital projects then?
Expect construction. So we have a number of phases that. That are in various processes or various stages of the process. So. Picking up a little bit on, on one thing that Travis mentioned. Is the roof project at Enfield, which has been bid and that's scheduled to have work done in 2024. So that'll be coming up soon. What we were calling Phase 3A.2, which included the window replacement at Beverly J Martin Elementary School, as well as some masonry work there. And some other improvements at, at Enfield Elementary. We didn't get favorable bids, we were a little bit late in the bid season, so. We're regrouping on that and we are thinking about, as Travis mentioned. Issuing a separate package, maybe just for the windows at Beverly J Martin, so we can. Continue to try to move forward with that work and then take the rest of it and combine it with. What we're calling Phase 3B.1, there are a lot of numbers, alphanumeric things happening, but that's the project that. Includes the, the high school, I think the high school STEM renovation. As well as. Expansion of the lake source cooling that currently is serving some cooling at Ithaca High School. So expanding that, replacing mechanical equipment. So that's a project that we just submitted to the state for their review, and we expect that to take, you know, the normal. Five or six months for them to review and get approval so that we can get set up for bidding that this coming fall. So that's the next big phase of work that will take a couple summers and some of the year in between. And that will take care of roughly half of the mechanical work at Ithaca High School. That includes replacing equipment and it includes the controls system. So if you remember the project that Travis mentioned at Dewitt and Boynton, which replaced the, the, the controls for that. That evens out a lot of complaints that you may have been hearing over recent years, that my room is way too hot, my room is too cold because the control system was just breaking down. And so we replaced that with a modern digital control system. So that's a big part of, of what we're doing at Ithaca High School as well. That amount of work to do that HVAC work is so big that. We broke it into two parts, one from just a, a labor standpoint, you know, the labor pool in this area for mechanical contractors to be able to do such a big job. As well as looking at the, the. The financial rules that the state of New York and the state education department puts on, on projects. It was, it made a lot of sense for a couple reasons to break that into two parts. So. There will be work at Ithaca High School for four summers to get all this work done, that's kind of the bottom line, so that will include that, that mechanical root work. On the, on the front end, the STEM renovation, and then on the back end of that, it will include. Reconfiguring and repaving the lot here in front of the district office, between Lake Street and the, and the district office and K Wing where we are right now. Along with that second package, there will be the playground work at Fall Creek Elementary School, so one of the things that we'll be hearing more and more about is. That, the, the design process for the redesign of that playground. We've engaged Dr. Janet Lobach, who's up at Cornell, who does this for a living. And among other things, she teaches as well. But to engage the school and the community in a collaborative process to, to figure out what the vision is for replacing that. That very iconic playground, playground that. Probably is important to a lot of us and, and our children, right, so. Spending some time to. Make sure that's done in a way that, that people feel comfortable about, so that'll be another big piece. That'll happen in a couple years. So then beyond that, so that's, that's the work essentially that has been. Either designed or estimated and kind of accounted for at this point. As we've been designing that, as it always happens, there are more things that come up, right, there are always, there's always parking lots wearing out and roofs aging out and things like that, so. A few of the pieces that we have started working on trying to quantify what the scope of work is. Include Cayuga Heights paving, you've been up there. In the front loop as well, in the back loop, that, you know, there, there's some significant paving issues there. So we've done some work to, to scope out a project there that. Doesn't appear that it would fit within the remaining budget for the, for the last capital project vote. We have also taken a look at fire alarm systems and clock speaker systems. Throughout the district and tried to quantify that. We have also. Started a process that we've talked about in other meetings around. Electric buses and providing the infrastructure at your bus maintenance facility on Boswick Road. That has taken the form of a few smaller phases, the first of which was bid, and we plan to get done in the next months here. Leading up to the arrival of your first couple electric buses. There is a second piece that we are about to get to the state for their review that will. Provide more charging stations. And then there is a larger capital project that we. Haven't yet sort of allocated the money for, which will be. Completing. Ninety or so. Bus charging terminals that will be needed over the long term as the fleet. Gets replaced over the, over the replacement cycle that the, that the district has planned. So there's a couple of the other, other pieces that are out there, so. Those. Those scopes of work that we're starting to define and get some, get some pricing for will inform the next capital project and likely be some of the priorities.
Thank you.
Good. So I've got a few questions on that, you said the work at the Ithaca, at Ithaca High School is gonna include four summers, over four summers, starting from 2023 or?
That will be starting in the summer of 2024.
And the fire alarm system and clock system, that's going to replace all of the clocks that are. The clock system that we currently have that doesn't always have accurate clocks and throughout the district is gonna replace all of that?
It, it would in theory, once we figure out how to pay for that essentially.
Alright, so that's what we're looking into, because we're, we're quite a few schools that have that issue.
Yeah, that's, that's bubbled up as, as one of the important needs, there's a safety component, there's obvious, you know, practical components to that. But that's, you know, in the neighborhood of $10 million to do that district wide, you have a lot of classrooms to do that, and that's, that's not something that fits within the current.
So is our current system connected with like the fire department or what, what alarms are they connected?
So fire alarms are connected, that's a kind of a code requirement, but. What are sometimes referred to as. Mass notification systems, or sometimes we'll call them clock speaker systems. They consist of. Probably shoeboxes, they're, you know, a box on the wall that has, you know, these days typically it's a little, a clock readout, a speaker. Sometimes they'll have screens that you can push emergency messages to, or whatever kind of message to that will scroll across. And so there's a safety, you know, component on that, you can imagine functionality during the lockdown or, or some sort of event there. As well as accurate timekeeping, just on a basic level as well. And that also has a PA function, so some of the PA systems are also aging out. So it does, it does kind of a number of things in one system, hopefully that answers your question.
And, and with the EV charging stations, are, have we started to have a discussion with neighbor and school districts and BOCs and. Layout design conversation on how we're going to. Report each other in case buses slip down midstream, yes.
So. Dan has been doing an amazing job, I don't want to take the mic from Dan. But the reason why we sort of started all this work was a grant opportunity. For actually all across the state that we became a part of, and so our energy folks at BOCs, Alan John and Mauricio. They're the ones that we would be connecting with across that. And in fact, I think there's just been re-engagement, Liz has been reaching out to them, and so we're actually, yes, we are definitely working on that. As far as other areas in New York State, we've already worked with our attorneys on what that might look like in terms of like. Like intermunicipal agreements or inter, you know, scholastic agreements around charging buses and things, so we're going down that pathway as well. I will tell you, we are well ahead of. Any region that's anywhere close that we would be competing with. In this, this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and let's move on to our sustainability discussion, Amanda, or who's going to kick that off? Okay.
Hello, everyone. Those of you that don't know, I'm Amanda Verb, I'm the Chief Operations Officer. When I came into the district, I. Had essentially inherited a project called the Energy Performance Contract, and that's where we're gonna sort of start our story. Of sustainability efforts, because I can just speak sort of to like what I know in the course of time. And I know that there were many efforts that were made before I came onboard in terms of the facilities department. So what we'll do is we'll start with sort of the, the where we've been, right, sort of like just a little reminder of what we've done already. I think then what will lead into is, once I'm finished with that piece, we'll sort of look to Heather, who's gonna come up and then talk about sort of the daily operations, so what, what we've done, what we're doing. And then we're gonna move it on to Chris, who's gonna talk a little bit about future planning and capital projects, that sort of should give kind of a really nice overview. Of the things that, that we've accomplished thus far. One of the things that I will say is that this is very facilities related, but there's so many wonderful opportunities for this in terms of curriculum. In terms of staff support, in terms of engagement with students and community partners, so please know that if they're not part of what we're discussing, it's not, that we're not doing that. We just really wanted to keep it almost very facilities related for this committee meeting. I will also want to celebrate the efforts of the students. And the partnership that they have given us and the adults in each of the buildings that they have given their time and energies and enthusiasm. To keeping us mindful of sort of our impact, not only on our local community but globally. And just what this means to just, you know, being humans commuting together in our environment and that. How important that is really to be cognizant of our impact there, so. Without the students, I think, you know, it definitely wouldn't be as much fun. That's for sure, and we have been so honored to be on panels and engage with them, just, you know, envisioning sessions and, and really doing some action planning. And as you know, we've already had a couple of presentations here and also at the board meetings. And, you know, we're doing everything that we can to encourage those voices to come forward, because we, we don't do a good enough job communicating what we're already doing. And also our commitment to all the things that yet to be done, right, so I think it's, it's that both. So with that said, just, I'm sorry for the, how red this is, it will be much easier for you to see. When you can sort of put this on a screen in front of you and you might have it right there, but this was a visual that. The company Train, who won the bid for the Energy Performance Contract. Sort of shared with the community during and after the work was done. And it gives you a little bit of a sense of those conservation measures that across the entire school district occurred. And it gives you a little bit of a sense of those conservation measures that um across the entire school district occurred. Uh essentially, the E P C's spirit is that A, you can get aid back on that pretty quickly. And um and so that's, that's really nice. And they're, they usually go through state ed pretty, pretty rapidly in terms of approval. At least they used to when this occurred, right? And um, you know, they're pretty clear parameters. You have to essentially engage in work that over the course of time. You would achieve savings to the district, right? So whether that would be um savings on how much uh, you know, your costs for for fuel or your maintenance costs for repairs. Or your heating costs, right? You would, you get these reports from the company that um wins the bid to essentially say, how are we doing? The challenge, one thing with this Energy Performance Contract, um is that we kind of had a global pandemic, um you know, in the middle of tracking. So it's, it it's showing that, you know, we were really, we did great work uh during those two years because nobody was here in the building. So it is skewed and we want to honor that data and there's a lot of, you know, um uh documents and things. We can definitely also share those documents as we get them at one point in time and maybe invite Matt Pinses from Train to talk about that as well. Um but as you can see, there's a lot of work with lighting, like simple things like putting a sensor on all the classrooms. Right? So that lights would turn off when nobody was in there or that there was no activity. And you can imagine the amount of energy that would, that would save us, switching out light bulbs, right? To um to ones that were higher performance and 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 lower impact. Um we did stadium lighting upgrade. That was really exciting and actually, you know, those old lights, they were being changed all the time. And we can, you know, the cap project, actually, you could, you could argue that the scoreboard now. Um versus the scoreboard that we had with all those little light bulbs and all that electric that was, you know, who knows? We're gonna have to analyze that, but that could also be something that we could think about. The building envelope improvements. I know Dan was the principal at the time at Bell Sherman when we actually um were. Adding additional um insulation uh to the building and sort of um, you know, addressing things around the windows. And making sure any drafts and stuff were corrected. Window replacements themselves, not at B J M though, but um that's why we're moving there. But there were other buildings that we did a couple of those. Um as you can see in a few buildings. Uh B A S is the the Building Control Systems, right? So um that's, that's essentially uh the ability to kind of heat and cool through, through controls, right? Either remotely, Heather's team has access to a portal or, right, a software system that they could turn on and off. Or um do it remedy check right there if they needed to. Uh high efficiency boilers. Um you can see we hit a couple of buildings and then. Wouldn't you know, a bunch of other buildings, their boilers started to, you know, say we're tired. And so we've been addressing those either through change orders or additional um dollars in the general fund to to take care of that. Uh we did do some pool improvements, not the work though that Dan stewarded in collaboration with the capital project, which was in the pump room. But actually the vents, the systems um that is, uh the air handling um units there. That was really uh an incredible efficiency for that space. And then finally kitchen improvements in a few places and definitely not enough. Um so that's another area where as we look at kitchens. And we had some surplus funds due to the federal reimbursements that were coming in during the pandemic. Um the, the Beth Kraus, who's the director there, was able to order some new equipment. We're actually working on being able to plug those in and not blowing fuses and having enough electric there, the buildings. But that will be a lot of efficiencies as well, um as of course anytime you get newer equipment away from the older uh energy gluggers, right? It's always a good thing. I think that's a technical term. So I'm gonna end there. Uh any questions about that?
Well, on this chart here, the facility, the administration building would be part of I H S.
So the, the interesting thing about our administration building is that it is its own building and it does not generate aid. It is a non-instructional building, but that doesn't have a function like transportation. Transportation would generate aid because they're serving students. Although we do serve students, administration buildings um oftentimes do not, they do not generate aid. That is why you see a lot of times in other districts, they've incorporated their district offices into an instructional building. To be able to leverage that um that A piece, but. So it's a great question, Carrie, and something we would want to think about in the future about sort of that, right? Like fluidity of um the folks who, who do administration work and then like where they're located. Uh so that if we wanted to improve some spaces there, we could do that. Any work that would have been done in the admin building was really on the facilities department and and uh, you know, changing out things. We do not have sensors in our offices. We were left out.
May I ask if the, the work that was done was according to some priority list that Train laid out? Or it was like, I presume it was in hopes of getting the the biggest amount of energy conservation for the amount of.
That's right, John. Yeah, so all of that work happened prior to to me coming onboard. But my understanding, when I received all the documents, right, and we started the project, was that um that analysis, when you send out that R F P, right? Just like Chris does, they, they have to go through these walkthroughs and really do an analysis of your current utilization. So you have a benchmark. And then you chart your improvements based on that. And you're right, the things that were chosen were things that could get them from A to B in terms of savings and impact.
At what point could, do you think we could see a chart from Train or someone else about where we are with payback? For what this project cost us versus what we're saving? I know that's something people always sell when they're doing solar systems or heat pump systems or anything else. They say, well, this will pay for itself in ten years, five years, fifteen years. It would be interesting to see which of these, which of things, these things has already paid for itself and which. You know, we're a long way off, if that's a possibility.
Sure. So that, so when I refer to the gentleman Matt Pinses, he's our Train representative. He's the one that would be able to come and do that and they offer us reports, I think on a yearly basis. So he could probably do a review of the most recent one um at an upcoming facilities committee event.
Yeah, I, I think that would be fascinating.
Sure.
And if, if, if the COVID thing skews the data too much, maybe we put it off for a while. But if, like, we can do an interim. Report on how that's paying off for us.
Great. I'd love to invite him. Sure. Fantastic.
Thank you. Anybody else? Heather, come back to us, I guess. And do you have anything else that you wanted to go over?
So Heather's gonna um now talk about the every day, right? The daily operations pieces like recycling and composting and um working with the students around that. And then Chris will talk about some of our future efforts.
Okay.
So this is just, this one slide, no pictures, all words. So the, the past, the, the work that had been done is um for the most part, the adult-led initiatives. The um, you know, hey, equipment and hey, bills to pay. And right now, facilities, our kind of vision right now is that we're trying to build capacity in our staff and our own abilities. To support all the student-led initiatives around sustainability. So there's some um bigger picture, um you know, equipment stuff. And then there's um facilities ability to partner with our teachers and students and our support staff. So um one thing that we uh is like a mantra inside our office. Uh when we get together and meet is we cannot manage what we cannot measure. And um I think that when students come before us, there's an urgency, right? Um time moves so quickly. Um and it has taken a number of months for us to really measure, where are we? And, you know, how do we get back on track post-COVID? And how do we support these student-led initiatives? So one of the, one of the things that we started with is looking at measuring. Where are we with recycling and composting? And who's leading that work and where are we in our capacity to support that? And kind of getting baseline data around that. Where are we with heating and cooling? Um and I know Enfield, there's the geothermal project, which is exciting. We have outdoor classrooms um and gardening efforts, those things, you know, we're in a, in a pretty good spot to support. We have our staff trained with those. Um Facilities is currently also supporting. This one's kind of an all-scape, the E Bus Initiative. That's an adult thing. It's a legislative thing and it's a kid thing too. And we're looking at ways to support that in terms of, you know, some of the power in the charging stations and canopies there. And um what's, what's new is old, right? Cafeteria trays. So here we are, we've gone all the way from cafeteria trays to uh that had little compartments to, you know, this, to that, to disposable trays. And now we're all the way back around to cafeteria trays. Um being um things that we want to leverage in terms of our sustainability efforts. So we want real trays that we can wash. And our partnership in that is that in order to wash them, you have to meet sanitizing temperatures, you need plumbing, you need electric. So we're supporting those uh student-driven initiatives. And I think that this is a really good place to also mention that as we're building capacity to support adult initiatives. And uh student initiatives around sustainability. That um one of the s- action steps for that is that when we, when we took a measure and an assessment. Of our community partnerships, we found that many of those relationships were fractured or um aged out. Or there's been so much turnover that there wasn't a relationship anymore. So we have reached out and set meetings and spent time with folks at B O Cs. Alwin John is the new director of facilities there. He has a ton of, of data and good advice around, you know, some of the adult initiatives. Uh we have a community partner in G I A C, in the Youth Bureau, and Zero Waste Ithaca, who worked with us in terms of grants and the cafeteria trays. And what we're really trying to do to build our own capacity to support these studentless-led initiatives is also find out. How can we be a better community partner and what can our community partnerships offer us that we might be missing? But we can connect the kids to that. So we're really just trying to branch out and connect the work and build our own capacity. Uh to support the student-led initiatives in the present right now. And if there are follow-up questions or points of interest? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Heather. So picking up on one of the things that Heather said about uh being able to manage what you measure. So when we talk about buildings specifically, we uh we talk about benchmarking. And that gives you an idea of the amount of energy you're using, for example. And so the district currently has taken advantage of a N I S E R T A program to uh track energy usage at all your buildings. And so that's something that you've signed up for and you have now maybe two or three years of data in that B three benchmarking tool. So I'll just put that out there. That can be a tool um looking forward to help you prioritize. You know, it, it helps to give you a relative idea of this school versus that school and it takes into account. Like that, like the high school operates, I don't know, twenty hours a day versus an elementary school, you know, may only be uh ten. So that's one of the, one of the important things that underlies uh thinking about sustainability when you're talking specifically about facilities. Some of the things that we have done in projects are, uh some of them are code mandated. So every time we do a building project, the energy code of New York State requires us to design to higher energy performance standard, standards. So when we re-roof Ithaca High School or South Hill Elementary School, you have more insulation on your roofs. You have, you're gaining efficiency every time you do upgrades. So that's one of the things that uh is just kind of standard. But I want to point out that, that, you know, that's inherently a part of the work we do. Caroline Septic System. Uh there used to be an outlet into the creek. Is that Six Mile Creek or Fall Creek? I can't remember which one it is. And so that, that new septic system no longer has an outlet. That deals with all the um effluents within the beds and it percolates through. So that's another aspect of water quality that's being improved. When we talk more specifically about energy. We talked a little bit about Enfield Elementary School. Those boilers were aging out and starting to fail. And so we did a cost comparison uh to replace those boilers with um, uh I think it was. It was either propane or fuel oil. There's no natural gas out of that, at that building. Uh and compared that with a ground source heat pump. Uh so heat pumps we see on buildings more and more these days. They tend to exchange heat with the air. Ground source heat pump exchanges the heat with the ground. Um so, and uh so Enfield will be an electrified building, right? So you hear a lot of, in the news about electrification. Obviously, the city of Ithaca is talking about electrification. Um so you'll have a building there. Um that, that is fossil fuel free. I mentioned earlier lake source cooling and talking about Ithaca High School's H V E C system. Uh so in, I think it was nineteen ninety seven, Cornell University. Installed some pipes that go to and from the lake and Cornell University. And at the time, Ithaca High School got attacked from that line. Um so that allows um, you know, the existing cooling, you know, the, the temperature of the lake. Uh like the temperature of the ground to sort of moderate and you can exchange uh heat, you know, back and forth between that. So we'll be expanding that system um and reducing fossil fuel usage. You'll be gaining cooling, um but try, but mitigating that with increased energy usage. Um so that's something that, that, that our engineers in particular get very excited about, but uh something that's worth noting. We talked about electric buses. Um that's another initiative that, that's moving forward that. Moves from fossil fuels to electricity. When, so any questions about that? That's, those are some of the pieces that we've done or have planned and will be, will be put into place soon. When we think about where we want to go, um it's been a couple of years now, maybe three or four years. I think it was twenty nineteen. We, we had a little presentation about how to think about sustainability. There are a lot of different uh directions from which one can look at sustainability, uh depending on what your priority is. Um there are programs such as LEED that we may have, they may have heard of, uh stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. Uh kind of an industry standard that um again measures things so that you can manage them. There are many other standards that are out there that focus on slightly different things. Uh for example, the WELL standard focuses more on occupant health. Um there are waste management standards, like the true standard. So if, if waste management is something that gets you really excited, there's a standard for that. So you can have a metric to measure your performance and a metric um that will help you establish some goal. So if you would like to have another conversation about. A district policy or, you know, a district standard or, you know, how you might want to approach sustainability. Either um in specific projects or in a larger sense, we're happy to continue that conversation.
Thank you.
I guess this is a um question for the president with facilities. Um are we connecting with um some of the student initiatives? At our last facilities committee meeting, we had Northeast Elementary's mean team. At the last board meeting, we had the high school. And from that conversation, it sounded like there's a disconnect or a no connection and collaboration happening at the moment. Or what can we do to encourage like student involvement?
So uh I was just actually talking with uh Dr. K up at the wit about this. That right now there are what, what I would envision as siloed efforts. That there's a strong team at Northeast, there's a strong team at Boynton. But um the disconnect is that I'm connected, like I, I'll go and I meet with the Northeast team. And I go on and meet, I meet with the Cayuga Heights team. But um the, I think the Fall Summit right now is the only opportunity that it all sort of comes together. And I, it's my understanding that post-COVID, it's in a fledgling state. That um the elementary and secondary groups um need a pathway to a stronger connection. But I, uh I might put Lily on the spot here. Lily or Amanda might have more information about. How, how deep and wide the student connection is regarding um sustainability efforts. So specifically, like I, I mentioned, Cayuga Heights has one, Northeast, Boynton, L I C S. But um I'll, I'll let Lily maybe take this.
Is that, is that the direction that you want to go in?
Right. So, so right now, I think in addition to the student voices, we're hearing the, the staff that represent the students, right? And their building saying, we really want coordinated efforts. And so Lily and I have been having, I don't know, maybe like three, three, four, maybe meetings thus far. And we've been having them all along, really, um, since actually even I began, uh, just talking about like what that might look like, right? So one of the, one of the first steps that we're doing to address that is we actually, just like we have, um, the model that Mary manages with Equity Mentors, we actually put into the budget, uh, sustainability mentors or advocates. This, the teachers and, and adults and kids are figuring out what they want to be called, right? What that will do is hopefully use Mary's model, which is coming together, you know, bridging the efforts so that we, we have a really, you know, coordinated focus, collaborate with facilities, uh, and the students to sort of have the, it's everybody's work, right? Cause I think everyone, we hear it each time, it has to be student-driven, adult-driven, systems-driven, processes-driven, capital project-driven, uh, you know, administration-driven. Like everything has to be working. So with that said, what, what the student-led, uh, work does is it educates everybody else about what you could be or what maybe you, you know, that one is passionate about and the other might just be getting there. And hopefully those, that mentorship between buildings through this sustainability mentors stipends will kind of perhaps build that system to be able to do that, right? So we can maybe visit each other's campuses and we can do virtual Zooms, like, you know, during, uh, extra class time and really chat about all this stuff or have a Saturday walk and talk, whatever that might look like, right? So, um, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to lead it. They're also asking for, you know, someone, someone in administration to be the, the point person, right? Like one person that they can go to that's going to drive this work. So, um, I know they did ask for, um, more than that, right? They wanted actually an administrator that is specifically sustainability focused. And perhaps as we move forward, right? And we, we know what the revenue is and we're looking at the budget. And if that is a board goal through learning forward, right? That we could definitely explore lots of options for these things, uh, to be thinking about. So I would say it's, it's, we're in the evolution phase of this work.
And so that takes care of internally and what are we doing to connect with like the Ithaca Green New Deal? Within the city as well as, um, what's in place at I C and Cornell?
Right. So right now, I mean, we obviously, we're connecting school to school with our Bosse's partners, right? So that's like, what is TruMansburg doing? What is Dryden doing? We actually, um, there's a number of folks from the city who have, have said, we don't meet often enough. Ithaca City School District, City of Ithaca, Tompkins County, right? So I would sort of, I mean, I, I looked at Chris on that. That's something where, um, when we were actually thinking about capital project planning with the, with the Transportation Department, before we even started, we did an engagement with, um, because TCAT was building their new facility at the time. And we had a really, some really solid meetings at that point. That has to be re, that has to be sort of re-energized. So I will say, Karen, we're not doing this enough and, and sometimes maybe we're doing zero and we need to do more. Uh, as far as Cornell and Ithaca College, uh, I know that they're invited oftentimes when the students are having, like, um, I know that there's like a sustainability summit. There's one and then there's a climate action summit. So there's actually two or three that occur during the school year. Those folks are always invited. Um, I try to attend all those and like, you know, again, do the networking. And then, um, you know, I will own the fact that that has to be taken the next step then. Like not just get the card, but then make the phone call and make the meeting and then, right? Have the agenda and, and build and bridge. So we got to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Good start to the discussion. Thank you.
It's exciting. Thanks.
Yeah. I, I just want to say that I, I personally love the fact that Facilities is, is so engaged in taking the lead on this and so much of sustainability is infrastructure and maintenance. And I, I think that's just the right place for it to be. So.
Great.
For what it's worth.
And Jill, one, one addition is communications, right? We, we actually, what we just shared tonight, most people don't know that we're doing. And so I think that's one thing that the students keep telling us over and over again. It's just like, you're doing good stuff and no one knows it. Like we want you to go faster and do more, but like what you're doing is pretty good. And so like, we got it. We have to do a better job of making sure that people know that we do take this seriously and that we have, you know, these goals to just even make it grander.
Right. All right. Thank you. So for, we're up to agenda setting. So I'll, I'll let you take the lead on this, of course, Amanda. And that's if you think it's, it's time to bring in the person from Train to give us a progress report.
I am, I was actually writing in the email, Heather, thank goodness I was like still.
Fabulous.
Um, I'm writing an email and, and so let me see what months might work. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about May just because Cap Project is going to roll really fast, right? Into May and June. And I think a really solid, like, here's what to expect with this building. Here's what, like, perhaps going through some of the schedules, right? So that we know what's happening. We're going to be meeting with principals and directors. So maybe we can do this in like, I'm, I'm wondering like June or July or something like that.
Sure. We've got a lot coming up the next few weeks and months. So, okay. Terrific. Anything else that's a, a burning issue for anyone that we should be discussing at this point? And what is the date for our next Facilities Committee meeting? Does anyone have that? What is it? May 17th is our next Facilities Committee meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. All right. Okay. Very good. Thank you all. Um, we're ready to adjourn.
Yep. I move to adjourn.
And I second and let's adjourn.